Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the June 23 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Secretary Moore, will you please call the rule?
Yes, thank you. Acting Chairman Turner is filling in this evening for Chairman Moffett, who is not here. Mr. DeChau?
President.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Casali is absent. Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. LaRae?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Raquel. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from our June 9, 2025, meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda: two site plans and one site plan special land use public hearing. First item is the Site Plan 25-12 for Brad Bates, Shelby Township Community Relations, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, located south of 24 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke Avenue, a proposed community relations building and a band shell. Is the applicant here to come on up?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LaRae.
The architecture firm that appear these plans is a firm that I work at, so I would like to recuse myself from voting on this project.
Okay, so noted. Thank you. All yours. Name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Burgess from AK Architects. Our office is located at 303 East Third Street in Rochester, Michigan. I am here representing Brad Bates for the Shelby Township Community Relations Building. Here with me is Brad Bates, representing the Shelby Township Community Relations Department. We are proposing a 22,000-square-foot, two-story building to be located on Shelby's municipal campus between the Township Hall and the police station, as well as next to the library and Heritage Bond. There will be a stormwater management engineered by Noak and Faust, who is a civil engineer on the project. So, starting off with the civil plans, the orange outline is the building footprint and bandshell. We are proposing an asphalt paving behind the building for parking and circulation, as well as a trash enclosure. We are also proposing new sidewalks to connect the existing pathways. We have also included a landscape plan per the Sydney ordinances. So, starting off with the floor plans, as I mentioned, we are proposing a 22,000-square-foot two-story building. In the blue is the community relations portion of the building, consisting of general storage, as well as general parking for their vehicles. In the red is the one-story bandshell with their support spaces, also consisting of concessions, as well as public restrooms. We are also proposing that the stage for the bandshell be three-foot off-grade with access on both sides via stairs, as well as an ADA ramp. And in the green on the left is a 10,000-square-foot lawn space for viewing of the performances. Next is the second floor of the community relations building, which consists of offices, as well as their recording space. We have also included a parking count, for your reference. This consists of 766 public spaces on Shelby's municipal campus. Next, we have the building renderings. So, this is from the lawn space, looking up at the bandshell. It is a steel structure. We currently have the bandshell depicted at 35 foot seven. We will be reducing this height by seven inches to meet the 35-foot requirement, thus not needing any variances. All of the colors in the scheme are based off our proposal. We are proposing a concrete masonry veneer on the overall exterior of the building. This is very similar to brick, other than the sizing. We are also proposing insulated metal panels in a gray tone, as well as a wood appearance. Next, looking at the back of the building, is room for their parking, as well as their vehicles. All rooftop equipment will be screened by the building parapet walls. And lastly, is the front entrance to the building. This has a clear architectural entry for public visibility. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any Commissioners have any questions for now? If not, Julie, want to give us your report?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. As the representative noted that they are going to work with the township, with the township on the seven inches for the variance request on the bandshell, it's at 35.7 inches, and they're going to be reducing the height of that, so the variance will not be required for that. A tree permit will be required. There's going to be some trees that need to be removed as part of this project, so a tree permit will be required for this project. And also, the CMU veneer is something that the Planning Commission would have to permit as part of this proposal. So, those are the only things that were of significance in my report. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, too, is this area does not have a designated parking for the building, except for the staff employees. They do have parking for all the staff that they required, but we do have shared parking, as you noticed, throughout all the parking lots, and our parking counts exceed what they're required for this building. And because of the uses, the times of uses of these parking spaces, I don't anticipate, but we still have significant amount of space on the township grounds here that we can, you know, we can add more parking if we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I can envision where we would have a parking problem anytime on the township grounds. But I do have one question. It's a technical thing. What was the square footage of the building you said you were going to put up?
22,000 square foot.
Okay. The reason I ask is that there was two different numbers on here?
Yes.
So I wanted to make sure that I had heard the right amount, so.
Yeah, that's including the bandshell.
What's that?
That's including the bandshell.
Yeah, we had two numbers on our review. That's why I was a little bit confused, but that's not unusual. Any Commissioners have any issues with the CMU veneer on the building?
I was going to question if you were going to add any additional parking, but apparently it's adequate, so that's the only thing I have.
All right, thank you. Any objection to the veneer, brick, brick veneer? Okay, then that's fine. Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none. Motion will be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve Site Plan 25-12 for Brad Bates, Shelby Township Community Relations, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 23-07-15-101-022, located south of 24 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke Avenue. Proposed community relations building and bandshell, subject to the submission of revised site plans, addressing all department and site plan review comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Baker. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae, you abstain. Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I neglected earlier to say also with us tonight is our Township Planner Julie Misich, our Township Associate Planner Nick Fiore, and our Township Attorney, the Honorable Bob Kirk. Had to say that, Bob. Next item is our Site Plan final PUD number 24-18 for Greg Acabelli for Steve Mancini, Legacy Village Land Holdings LLC, located south of 25 Mile Road, west of Van Dyke, Legacy Village Manners Duplex Units. This is a re-review. Have the applicant come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Address 6939, 19 Mile Road, Sterling Heights, Michigan is our office.
Go ahead. What are you proposing in your re-review?
We did the re-review. We went through all the comments. We addressed all the issues that were listed. Do you want to go through them?
No, I mean, it's your proposal, whatever you want to present.
There's the, we're just.
Mm-hmm.
Proposal of the front elevation, with the facade and all the building materials that we used. Again, all the comments that were issued have been addressed.
Okay. Julie?
Thank you, Chairman.
Over to you. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So, this project was heard back on June 10, 2024, was in front of this board. There were some still significant items that needed to be addressed on the site plan. The applicant has returned, addressed all the site plans that are listed on the comments, also obtained some state and county permits, and we are currently working on the master deed and the bylaws. We're reviewing that with the attorneys and internal departments. So, basically, they are there. All the plans have been approved, and the engineering has been approved on this project as well. So, this is the final step in this PUD process for this portion of the development.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Motion will be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Appone?
Move to recommend approval to the Township Board for final Site Plan PUD application number 24-18, Greg Acabelli for Steve Mancini, Legacy Village Land Holdings LLC, vacant parcel number 23-07-09-200-029, located south of 25 Mile Road, west of Van Dyke Avenue, Legacy Village Manners Duplex Units. The applicant has obtained all necessary approvals for the project to comply with the final application process for a planned unit development.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Appone, supported by Commissioner LaRae. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Stay cool. And our final item tonight is a Site Plan Special Land Use number 25-09, DNH Liquor Express Incorporated, 4840, 23 Mile Road, located on the southwest corner of 23 Mile Road and Shelby Road. It's an Amaco gas station renovation. This is a public hearing. I'll call the public hearing to order and ask the Secretary to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of a Site Plan Special Land Use. Applicant, Duread Youssef, DNH Liquor Express, Inc., 4840, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316. Proposed use: Amaco gas station renovations. Location 4840, 23 Mile Road, located on the southwest corner of 23 Mile Road and Shelby Road. Site Plan SLU 25-09, Sidwell Number 23-07-20-129-020. Legal description is as follows, as published. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, June 23, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Building, Boardroom 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the Site Plan Special Land Use request. The application for the Site Plan Special Land Use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006, as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published on June 4, 2025, in the Macomb Daily. There were 45 property owners, and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on June 3, 2025.
Thank you, Raquel. Mr. Kirk, does the notice meet all legal requirements as required in state statute and local ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Could you explain the use under the present zoning and if the special land use is appropriate for the district?
The zoning is a C1 district. Gas stations are permitted as a special land use if they had been previously used as a station, which this one has, so the request is proper for me to consider.
Okay, thank you. Did we get any correspondence on this, Raquel?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. As I said, this is a public hearing. The format will be as follows. The petitioner or his or her representative will come forward and give a presentation stating the reason or reasons for the rezoning request, or the special land use request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be open to the public, and then the petitioner can come forward and ask any, make any concluding remarks. At this time, petitioner is here. Come on down. Let us know what your plan is and what you're proposing. And I would say after you're done speaking, well, you can speak first. You can sign in afterwards. That's fine. It's quicker that way, easier that way, so. State your name and address, please, and.
My name is Arthur Collagin, Collagin Architecture and Design, Troy, Michigan, and I'm representing the two owners right behind me. We started this project about a year ago, and initially, the intent was to try to salvage the building and expand upon it, but as we went into it further, issues of the existing condition developed, as well as trying to look at the future and try to meet the future setbacks, so they wouldn't have to have problems later. And the main intent was salvage of what we could on the project. So, what the end result ended up being is a proposal for a new building, C-store, and then utilize the existing canopy and pump stations and increase the accessibility around them. So, what we ended up with is a slightly larger building. I think initially it was all over 3,000 square feet. Now, we're around 4,200 square feet. This allowed the setback further into the site, have greater right-of-way, for future right-of-way use, where we don't have to worry about the building meeting future right-of-way. So, we meet and exceed the front setbacks. This is an unusual site where three sides of the building front a frontage of a street, so the major use areas, 23 Mile Road and Shelby Road are either the front and the side, and then the rear becomes the other frontage facing, I forgot the name of the secondary road, but it's covered up with a mass of trees, so there's very little impact. We were able to increase the parking to satisfy, I think, the parking requirements, and basically put them closer to the building than what was prior there. So, overall, you're getting a site that has more trees, screening that was not there, a better-looking building, and more accessible, more products. And they're going to introduce a small takeout restaurant within that to accommodate the demand for some quick meals. That might be for people on the go. There'll be an addition of a liquor store. They were able to get a liquor license, so they'll expand that part of it as well. And overall, I think it'd be an asset because of the architecture will be a lot better than what's there, easier circulation, no detriment to any of the neighbors. We're, in fact, increasing a wall between the 1R1 for a six-foot-high masonry wall, plus planting there to help screen that off as a buffer. We're going to have some outdoor sales, basically on a large modified sidewalk, which will have some wood for sale, water, propane, and ice. Essentially, the rest of the sales will be on the inside of the building, and we'll be maintaining the two canopies with the same pumps. There's no increase to that. We relocated the truck loading area to the frudge facing 23 Mile Road, but it's masked by landscaping and penetrates into the site as far as we can go until it touches the setback. So, I think most of it would be covered up. Other than that, I think there was no other issues that I could think of that ran across when we redeveloped this. We're going to have the proper drainage. We may have to put in-site catch basins in lieu of the existing catch basins that are outside the, right directly over the approach, but that's up to engineering to decide how we treat that. But the owner wants to pave the whole surface again with a fresh pavement of concrete to the proper slopes, especially if we had to put catch basins. So, they're willing to spend the money to make it a first-class operation, and hopefully, people will agree as well. If you have any specific questions about the time of operations or any of that, either one of these owners could address that.
Yeah, what you're proposing here is a much more enhanced look than what we have there. A building was built, I don't know when, probably 50 years ago or something?
Right, at least that, yeah.
You've also done, looking at the rendering here of the layout, you're closing off two of the entrances, which I think will help.
Yes, yes.
Because it is kind of confusing when you have the four entrances and exits on the building.
Right.
Don't know which one to come in and out of, so that kind of does clean it up a bit, too, so. Any other Commissioners have any questions for the petitioner?
Is there?
Mr. Long?
Is there going to be adequate room to get a fuel tanker in there without blocking the other roads?
Yes, if we have to, it'll be where the loading area is, because that's primarily where the tanks are, right there. So, our intent is to schedule that at a time when that's not being used for loading and unloading.
I just wonder, like, what driveway are you going to come in off of Shelby or off of 23?
Well, both driveways are 30-foot wide, so I think they could pick and choose. I'm not sure what they would use, yeah.
All right, just, I'm just looking at this drawing. Looks like it might be a little tight, but.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Chairman.
Mr. DeChau?
Mr. Youssef, I give you a lot of props doing what you want to do, knocking down the building, redeveloping it. I mean, obviously, you live, eat, breathe, and sleep in this business in Shelby. You also currently own the BP Down the Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is a wonderful, looks great. I visited both sites. I just wish that the building maybe could have been turned where we can put five pumps, five aisleways where they're in and out, instead of just the two, you know, the way they are right now. I know the project's going to take about a couple of years, but I think it's going to be a great one. It's going to be a lot of money invested in it, and I give you props. Very good. I hope people in this business follow what you do. I know 23 Mile did it, and you're going to do it. I hope more do, because there's a lot that needs to be renovated. And I give you props. Good job.
Nowadays, you have to do that in order to.
Sir, you want to step up to the mic, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
So, my name is Duread Youssef, and my address is 2829 Irma Drive in Shelby Township, Michigan.
Okay.
So, I also live in Shelby.
Okay.
So, in order to compete nowadays, you have to renovate what you have to be able to compete with all these new competitions that's coming into the area.
Yeah, you're 100% correct. I have experience in this, so I know what it takes, how much money it takes, how long it takes. So, I really, I'm really, really happy when I saw it, and I just hope that other people follow what you do, because in order to get better, you have to reinvest in yourself.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just, I'm really excited. So, I can't wait till the finish touches this.
Thank you.
I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One question. When do you think you'll start with the renovation?
Soon as we get the approval.
Oh, okay. Just curious, okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, you can sit down for now, sir. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We at the Planning Commission are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. So, if there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against, this is your time. Come on down. If you speak, make sure you sign in. Anybody out there wish to speak? Going once, twice? All right, hearing none. We'll come back up to the board. Nick, you want to go ahead with your review?
Sir, thank you, Chairman. So, thank you, Mr. Collagin, for doing a great job explaining the project. As he stated, they're going to completely redevelop the site, leaving only the gas pumps and the canopies there. As Mr. Turner stated, they're going to close down those two entryways closest to the intersection of 23 Mile and Shelby Road, which I think will really help facilitate traffic on the site, make it more maneuverable, and make it more user-friendly. This is a tricky site to redevelop. As Mr. Collagin said, it fronts three roads, 23 Mile, Shelby Road, and Cedar Grove to your west there. It's not easy when you have all those frontages to deal with. However, they've done a good job of orienting the convenience store itself toward the street and keeping it away from the residential properties to the west and to the south. With that, I won't go over too many more of the details for the site itself, as it was mostly covered. So, I'll go over some of the outstanding items to address on the site plan. We did go through a preliminary review. That's where a lot of the regulatory comments have been addressed already, so it was just a few that I have to go over with the board and the applicants here. So, one of the things they did for the parking is that since they do have the parking areas, the drive areas encroaching that front yard setback, they're providing that knee wall and landscaping along the street fringes there, which is something that's encouraged by the zoning ordinance, and does a good job of kind of making it more attractive from the street there. So, I think that's a good thing they're doing there, adding that landscaping and that wall. They're also improving the pedestrian access to the site, adding the seven-foot-wide sidewalks there along the roadways, which goes a long way toward the Township's master plan and the sidewalk connectivity plans for the Township. For the site plan itself, they are going to need one variance, and that is to have that loading/unloading area within the front yard. Now, locating it where it is, I think, is fairly reasonable. If it was located in the rear yard, that's required by the ordinance, it's going to be right in line with the residential properties to the west and the south. So, I think that may be a reasonable or variance for them to seek from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I would invite the Planning Commission to, you know, discuss that as well. Beyond that, you did note that you're going to be doing some outdoor merchandising, the propane chests, the propane tanks, and the ice chests. Just to make sure those are identified in the site plan as well. I see those referenced in here, but I just need to see them on the site plan, showing where they're going to be, which is a simple notation. And on that, another revision will be for the light levels at that southern property line where you bought that residential property. They can't exceed one-half-foot handle where you're abutting that property there, which should be a simple adjustment for the, you know, lighting for the site. Other than that, they are going to be doing a aluminum composite siding for the facade there, which is going to deviate from the brick and stone requirement as per the ordinance. However, the Planning Commission can approve that at this level, rather than making them go get a variance. I would say the facade they proposed is usually more of an accent for that aluminum siding, so I think it does fit well within the area, and it's not too, you know, visually obtrusive, and I think it adds a nice variety to the architecture on the site. I would say a great job on the good redevelopment, investing in the company. As Mr. DeChau said, it's very impressive to see these business owners impressing and investing in the convenience stores and gas stations in the Township. I think it's going a long way to help you compete with some of the newer businesses we're bringing in. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Following up on what you said, does anyone on the Commission have an issue with the composite aluminum siding on the building?
No, but I do have a question.
Go ahead, Raquel, yeah.
And I'm not sure who to direct this to, but as far as it being an aluminum-based product, will that tend to rust over time, or?
Actually, aluminum is non-ferrule, so it won't rust.
I didn't know if it would.
Yeah, because same as what you see in dealerships around with that silvery color.
Right, right.
Designed to stay for, I think, 30-year warranties with those, but it's, it'll last longer than that. I've seen it last longer. So, it's better than a lot of other materials as far as they're really better, lightweight and feature. They call rain screen systems.
It's a beautiful design, by the way. Much needed to improve that site, that's for sure.
Good job.
Great job. So, thank you.
Raise your rates. Okay, so, does anybody have any issues with the composite siding? I'm hearing none, so I guess that means we're okay with it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have anything else you'd like to add to your presentation? Come on up if you, come on up to the mic, please, if you do.
ZVA, because I was hoping to go into construction drawings, because they want to continue. So, that would be another public hearing, or could that be, is there any way of making that administrative, where since it's in a peculiar situation where there is no, per se, rear yard access possible, which is through the tree, tree area that's we want to maintain, it's typically impossible to make, meet that requirement of not being in a frontage, since you have three street sides.
Yeah, it's hard for us to deviate from that. That's why we have the ZVA. Julie or Nick, you want to?
Yes, so the Zoning Board of Appeals does have allowances for unique properties like this, and unique developments. However, that's not something that can be done administratively, as it is a requirement from the zoning ordinance to put that loading area outside of the, effectively the street view of the area. They don't want usually to have it visual from the street. But I think with the site you have, we can get you on the next available Planning Commission meeting, which I believe would be August. ZVA, ZVA meeting, yes, which would be August. So, it would still be a public hearing, same type of, you know, meeting as this was, but I don't think it would delay your project by that much. And you could likely get moving on the engineering phase and final site plan approval in the meantime. approval in a good time.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, our role would be to offer a positive, negative, or neutral recommendation on that. That would be where we would come into play on this, okay? I'm sure that'll be part of the motion when we make it tonight, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else have, and that's, you have nothing else to say? Okay, then I'll have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move?
Move. Support?
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The planning commission's recommendation tonight must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. The planning commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table this request to evaluate tonight for more information. At this time, I'll request a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I recommend approval to the Township Board of Trustees for Site Plan Special Land Use 25-09 for Duread Youssef, DNH Liquor Express, Inc., 4840 23 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-20-129-020, located on the southwest corner of 23 Mile Road and Shelby Road, Amaco Gas Station renovation. The applicant has adequately addressed the standards and the zoning ordinance, including Section 6.5 Special Land Use standards, and Section 4.28 gasoline self-service stations. Revised site plans must be submitted to comply with all of the planning commission, engineering, and department comments. The planning commission at this time offers a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for the proposed loading area in front of the building due to the unique features and design of the site and proximity to residential areas where the loading space to be located within the rear yard as required by the zoning ordinance.
Support.
motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning directors report? Nick or Julie, anything?
I don't have anything, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, you supported. Who made the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Wow, there we go. Motion by Moore, supported by Long. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.